We are prepared for the work session on like four, five policies, four policies.
Ms. Kim Howe.
Yes. I took a cough drop, so we'll see if we can get through this without a huge coughing spell. I will summarize the first policy before I do it because there's a new policy and then there's a lot of deletions to go with that policy. So as we go through, I will try and do it that way. So starting with policy F A, it is being changed in title from facilities development goals and priority objectives to facilities planning and funding. This is consistent with trying to bring the whole process of facilities planning and approval into one document. So if you were to read it, it reads from the beginning to the end of the process. What we have now are seven policies that you have to read to get bits and pieces of it, and they do not follow in sequential order. So policy F A is being changed to facilities planning and funding. In order to do that, policy F A A, evaluation of facilities planning and development. Policy F B, facilities planning. Policy F B A, planning advisors. Policy F B D, state capital improvements program. Policy F B E, local capital improvements program. And policy F D, facilities funding will be deleted. All of the contents of those have been incorporated with some additional comment into this new policy. In addition, we made sure that we added all of the annotated code and COMAR that needed to be incorporated into the policy. We also made sure that we added the guiding principle, which is the Maryland Public Schools Administrative Procedures Guide. We added the purpose that the board has the primary responsibility to plan for school facilities that address changing enrollment patterns, maintain high-quality educational facilities that are in accordance with the policies of the board, and that you fulfill this responsibility through the facilities planning and approval process. Other policies within F policy are under Mr. Hartwick's purview, which are the actual construction process. So this is just talking about how we plan for facilities and how we get them approved through the capital projects. New text in the beginning talks about that the compliance is in accordance with all guidelines established by federal, state, and local regulations, and that the superintendent or his or her designee will annually arrange to have an educational facilities master plan and capital improvements program developed by approval, with approval by the board, and that the required components or acceptable plans will be in accordance with the administrative procedures guide of the public school construction program. That is called out in COMAR. Facilities planning will reflect the needs of a current and future instructional programming, population enrollment projections, projections, site acquisition needs, current inventory facilities, land use growth plans, current condition of facilities, and will be based on a comprehensive maintenance plan and economic conditions. And that rolls up everything that we are trying to do within our facility planning and capital programs. These plans will reflect the intent of the board to provide facilities that support student achievement and provide each student with the most effective education within available financial means, which gets to our goal of trying to support education and be fiscally responsible. We deleted the text that tried to talk about that same piece, but was was not as encompassing. We did change the objectives of the capital improvements program to reflect the current program requirements. That is to renovate and modernize, not just to renovate. The program has really taken on modernization. And if we look at Spring Ridge and Lenter Town, we really are modernizing our facilities, not just renovating them. And then bringing in some of those ones that we are going to be deleting, we brought in the requirements that talk about what we shall submit would be the six-year C I P for projects that include our new structures that are going to be permanent additions to our existing. Talk about replacement and renovation of our existing for all code requirements. C I P projects will include major pieces of equipment, which have a useful life of last of at least 10 years, which is how we fund equipment through the capital improvements program. Purchase of certain movable equipment for any capital improvements project. It talks about the cost of architectural and engineering or construction studies for capital projects, acquisition and preparation for land, including site infrastructure, and installation of significant additional environmental security or control communications and data systems. So it outlines what we can do through a C I P through the state. And then it talks about the local, because as I said, we are deleting both the state and local policy. And it talks about the local C I P must include projects that are contained in the state's C I P. There's a policy that talks about that written C commissioner approval is required of the state's C I P, and that if any additional funding or an amendment to the funding is necessary, that we must go back to the county commissioners for that supplemental funding. And it outlines the goals of the C I P, which are to meet interim and long-term capacity needs, maintain a systemic addition renovation and modernization schedule, ensure schools are environmentally safe, secure, efficient, and comfortable, and meet the educational program requirements, ensuring equity for all, and that the board will, policy will be updated based on the board's review schedule or as federal, state laws and regulations change. So it really truly covers how we start with the planning from the ed spec all the way through the state and local capital improvements program. I'll go through what was deleted. F A A was the evaluation. And what that talked about was that it would be conducted by state staff and county agencies, and that we would actively research and obtain data to develop the capital improvements program. That would be a deletion. F B talked about the fact that it had to be in compliance with the Administrative Procedures Guide, and it actually at the time outlined what was required. Those consistently change on an annual basis. So we did not want to outline specifically what it said. We get new instructions every year. So we just say that in the new policy that has to be in accordance with the Administrative Procedures Guide of the public school construction program. It said that we had to submit a current and five-year plan. It was in accordance with the master plan. All of this has been incorporated into the new policy. It talked about the things that we needed to consider. Those have been incorporated into the goals. Also being deleted is the planning advisors. It just said that it would be presented to the C I P Technical Review Committee. That committee hasn't been used for the past six or seven years. What is used now is that we do review them in-house and we seek review through other county agencies as we're developing our C I P and we, sorry, seek input from the schools as well. And then this is policy F B E, F B D that would be deleted. And this is the process of how the state capital improvements program was developed. All of this was incorporated in. It talks that it had to be in compliance with the public school construction program, and it gave the dates again. All of this is subject to approval every year by the public school construction program. So we just said we had to be in accordance with public school construction program procedures guides. F B E was the local capital improvements program side. So we incorporated that in and are proposing this be deleted. Again, it says it has to be in compliance with the state capital program, and it outlined the projects that we could do and gave those goals and objectives. At the time that this was written, it gave objectives, it gave priorities, and those have been subsequently turned into the goals that we outlined. And this was facilities funding, F D, and is being proposed. And it just says that it will be approved annually and submitted to the Board of Public Works as approved by the Board of County Commissioners. Again, this whole process is outlined in the administrative procedures guide. So those are all of the ones that would be deleted as and incorporated as in submitted as part of F A. So that is that whole process. Would you like me to stop at this point and then ask questions on this particular policy group?
Yeah, that's how it worked before, and I think that way you're not scrolling back and forth between different files.
I'll go back to F A then.
All right, questions, anyone, Mrs. Crosby?
No.
Miss Lee?
Thank you.
No questions. Mrs. Weir?
I think it just flows better having it all on one like that.
I have a question on, let's say when projects are pushed out, how, how does that impact whatever the timeframe is to, was it six years? The capital improvements program. So if a project is pushed out, like let's say it was slated for whatever year, then, you know, we built Captain Walter Francis Duke, or we had the, you know, we had to do the Spring Ridge renovation. So that kind of sucked up all the money. And then I'm sure there were a variety of projects that were pushed farther out. So then how does that, how do we make sure that those projects that are continuing, that they're not continually pushed out, that they are then brought back into a, a more, you know, closer year? Do you know what I mean?
Yes. So what we would do is we would come back to two things. We'd come back to our objectives.
Okay.
Which is to provide the facilities that are safe and secure and to meet our present and future needs.
Okay.
So what we are constantly doing is balancing debt affordability with those needs.
Okay, as long as, as long as that's, those fit into those bullets and that's mentally where they go. That's, that's all I wanted to know.
That is what we do. So when Mr. Dr. Walker started, that was the very first thing I sat down with him and I looked at that. We call it a debt affordability list. It's that summary sheet that we give you when we do our state and local C I P.
Right, and that's what I have in my mind in asking the question.
And we talk about those, and that's what I think Mrs. Allen was saying, that they go in and out. But the guiding principle that we always come back to is what is our objective? We need to have seats, and they need to be safe and secure, and they need to have good infrastructure. So this is what we always come back to, are those objectives and goals and priorities, knowing that we have to be fiscally responsible, as the policy says. But our main objective is always to put forward what our need is and then be told we can't afford it.
Okay, right. I don't, I don't want to ever shortchange the existing schools that we have, you know, or even the smaller schools, especially on the elementary level, just, you know, because we keep building and kind of sucking all the money out of the room, you know, to put toward those projects.
So we will put forward our requests based on our need. And then if we get directed, and and the evidence of that is last year, the commissioners, based on their funding level, deferred the high school one year.
Right.
So we put forward the need based on what we feel is our objectives, and then they will tell us if financially they can afford it, and if not, they will make the adjustments through the process.
Okay, I just want to make sure it was captured or, you know, within.
Okay.
You did a great job consolidating the policies so there aren't so many, but it gets the job done. Thank you.
Just a wordsmithing, under the objectives of the capital improvements program, the second bullet, to meet the present and future enrollment needs, I would suggest that we drop the, to meet present enrollment needs, so to meet present and future enrollment needs.
Exactly.
I, I look to the English major since I wasn't one.
And I can tell you, we actually, we debated that several times in wordsmithing this, and it was in and out. So I can concur with you to take that out.
Yeah, the, the reason I say that is I, I separated it into two sentences to determine the way it would be if we were just talking about.
Present.
Needs, the future. To meet present enrollment needs. You dropped the, the. Thank you, that's all.
Okay.
Does anyone have anything else? All right, moving on.
Okay. We have one that actually stands on its own, which is F B B.
I'm sorry, F B D or E?
F B B, sorry, the code.
Enrollment projections.
Got it.
Yes, F B B is by itself, it is enrollment projections. We did add the purpose statement to it. We did, I'll go back to the top, I'm sorry. We did delete education article four oh one one three. It is not the current education article any longer, and it was changed to four dash two oh five. We added the purpose statement and under the new template, that the Board of Education has a responsibility to address the needs of the school system by accounting for the current and projected students in pre-K through 12th grades. The Board fulfills this responsibility by developing current and ten-year enrollment projections, which is the requirement of the Maryland Department of Planning. We did do a little wordsmithing, that the superintendent of schools will direct staff to develop enrollment. But it was currently written as the superintendent developed.
I'm going to go out there and do a head count, right.
And then we did, in the next paragraph down, changed the wording a little to make it more up to date and to change and correct the Maryland Office of Planning to the correct terminology, which is the Maryland Department of Planning, and to incorporate that we do, when we do the projections, use localized demographic resources. We do not just rely on the state's data. And then we did add that the expectation is that we would review the policy according with the board's schedule and all federal and state laws changes.
Is it localized demographic or is it local?
We debated that as well. We will defer to the board, whichever you prefer.
Well, tell me which, I mean, localized says.
We were talking, when the reason that it was localized was because it was felt that it was regional, that it could be not just local as to St. Mary's, that it localized would encompass more regional.
Like the entire Southern Maryland region?
Yes.
Yeah, see, to me localized means just specifically St. Mary's County, whereas appropriate regional demographic resources would expand that or, so I, I think it, since you're the one that does this, you have a better understanding of exactly what you're trying to say.
I would like it to say, if I had mine to go back and go, I would say regional.
Okay.
Because we do use the entire Southern Maryland based on workforce.
Right.
And trends in housing.
Right, yeah. Because we have folks who go over to Calvert to deliver. We have folks who are up in Charles County to, to deliver. Or, or even, you know, have to go to Baltimore to deliver, so.
And what we're seeing is, you know, the trend of migration of families from Calvert to St. Mary's and Charles to here, and it really is affecting our outskirts of our growth in terms of our schools. So I, I think regional demographic data, our resources would be.
I think that, that makes more sense to me if that, if the rest of the board agrees.
Yeah, because I took localized just to me and St. Mary's.
Mm-hmm.
Any other comments on that one?
Is there anyone else?
Hmm?
No. Then moving on, we come down to another one that is being consolidated. Four policies are going to go into one. F C C, which was called Building Accommodations, which at the time really just addressed, when it was written, the fact that we had gone into the Americans with Disabilities Act, which at this point has just been incorporated into everything we do and does not need to be singled out as an individual policy. So we're going to change that title to School Facilities. And what we want to incorporate into that is F C A, which was combining schools, F C B, which was closing schools, and F C C, which was temporary school facilities. So we want to delete those three and just make one that says School Facilities and talks about the combining, closing, and use of temporary facilities. We did add quite a few references to annotated code and COMAR. This one I do have to advise you is changed as of this morning. And the reason is, Mr. Law contacted us last night, and he did want to make a reference change to one of the annotated codes in COMAR. So the paragraph three was changed to reference a different citing of COMAR and to change it to say the education article four one one five of the annotated code of Maryland versus the Maryland annotated code. So there was a little reference change. It's still the exact same thing, it's just the wording and the order. We put annotated code before COMAR. So what this policy does, we did change the beginning, the purpose, to put the correct use of the board. Apologize, I'm sorry. And to delete the reference to the Americans with Disabilities Act, which would have, if, if done, would have been better suited in Mr. Hartwick's section for construction. The policy statement incorporates the ones that have been deleted, but what it basically incorporates it to is to address the short and long-term facility needs of the school system through the educational facilities master plan and a comprehensive six-year capital improvements program that is based on enrollment, infrastructure assessment, educational facility program requirements, and existing and planned school facilities. Any changes in the use of a school must be reported to the public school construction program. And then we wanted to capture all the ways in which a school may change its use. The board may, upon the review of enrollment, infrastructure, emergency, natural disaster, or educational standards, combine existing schools on a short or long-term basis. So this allows us, in the event of something like the fire at Spring Ridge, if we needed to, to put in the temporary facilities or to combine a use. The board may close a school if it has determined that any land, school site, or school building is no longer needed for school purposes. Those procedures are covered under the education article four one one five of the annotated code, as well as in Code of Maryland Regulations COMAR thirteen A oh two oh nine oh one. And there are minimum criteria that are specified in COMAR as to how a school can be closed. However, the facility may continue to be used by St. Mary's County Public Schools for other support purposes, such as offices or warehousing. Closed schools or facilities not being used should be transferred to the county government in accordance with the procedures outlined in the education article four one one five of the annotated code of Maryland. We can retain a building, such as we did with the Bethune for use of office, but if we choose not to use it, it does go back to the county. And then there's a process that goes to the Maryland Clearing House, and other agencies have the opportunity to request use of that facility. Hollywood Elementary School is a prime example. It went back to the county, and Reckon Parks uses it. Carver as well. It is the intent of the board to meet the long-range housing needs for students with permanent facilities. However, it is recognized that during periods of rapid growth, emergencies, natural disaster, or attendance area adjustments, it may be necessary to house some students in temporary state or locally owned relocatables. When they're used to meet these needs, such facilities will conform to all applicable building codes, health and fire laws, environmental standards, and the Americans with Disabilities Act as required. They can be used temporarily to provide additional space for classrooms, special teaching stations, or offices as needed. They may be utilized for relief of enrollment overload and/or enhance program needs at a particular school. And once purchased, they remain available for use at other locations. And then the statement that they will be, this policy will be subject to the review and schedule and other updates to laws. Policy F C A was combining schools. And basically what it said was that it was subject to review of enrollments. Any changes must be reported, so we did incorporate that. F C B was closing of schools, and that it said that it, all this was incorporated, that they may choose to close a school, and that they could use it for offices and warehouses, and that it needed to be transferred back to county government. We have made sure that it's clear that it's covered under law, so that if there's any changes, that is all covered. Will be in compliance. F C C was temporary school facilities, which we're looking to delete. It talked about relocatables, and we have incorporated that as well. So those are the ones that we are looking to delete and incorporate into the new policy. Any questions?
I do.
Go ahead.
On F C under purpose, in the first line, it says that we're committed to providing adequate, equal, and accessible facilities. I think it's almost impossible for us to provide equal facilities, but we can provide facilities that are equitable. And so I would like to suggest we consider the word equitable rather than equal. What do you guys think?
I think that's a good idea.
Right.
I concur.
Thank you. That's all?
Anyone else? Okay. See, we're saving your voice.
I appreciate it. Okay, we have one last. F F A memorials was before you for a first reading quite a while ago, and we spent a lot of time. You asked us to go back and take another look at it. We did, we spent a significant amount of time discussing, looking at what other school systems do, and we brought back another proposal for you. It's been reviewed with Mr. Smith. And what we are proposing, under the purpose, is to establish guidelines for memorials for deceased employees and students. What we're proposing is that the name of an employee who passed away during active employment with the school system or in recent years may be placed on a perpetual plaque. The name of a student who passed away while attending pre-K through 12th grade may be placed on a perpetual plaque. The names can be added to the plaque inside the building in which they worked or attended school. These requests must be submitted to the site administrator and approved by the superintendent of schools or his designee. Other types of memorials for deceased individuals are not permitted in public school buildings or on school grounds, and the plaques will be provided by the Division of Supporting Services and will be uniform in nature size and composition. So what we are proposing is that each school and office would have a uniform in size perpetual plaque, one for employees and one for students. And that upon the passing away of an employer or student, the request would be made to the superintendent and reviewed, and then maintenance would update those plaques.
So it's a physical memorial as opposed to a scholarship fund or?
Yes. Or a bench or a tree, which can, can be a little difficult for us to maintain as we do school construction projects or other things in the schools. This is very consistent with what county government has.
But the other policy covering the memorial scholarships is still in place.
Right, but I'm just wondering if because there's more than one, and I, I'll have to go back and read the other one, is should we make a distinction that this is a physical, we're talking about physical memorials here.
Yes.
Rather than, because if you, if you just see this policy in isolation, and if you're, if you're looking for something and you come upon memorials, you conceivably could read this to mean this is the only thing you can do. You can't recognize someone who passes in a different way, like a scholarship. So it, it, this is really about a physical memorial.
So maybe that's what the title of this needs to be.
Right. And, and that in the verbiage here, that there be some reference in the policy statement, that we are, we are specifically referencing physical memorials. And then, and I didn't look to see, but is there a reference at the top? We might also want to cross-reference this with the memorial policy that deals with scholarships.
Well, I pulled that one up.
J F F doesn't, I mean, that's just, that's just scholarships, gifts, and awards.
That's the one that Tammy provided.
Okay.
But it does not specifically talk about memorial scholarships. So that's why I think we need to.
Yeah, right, it's.
Or outline something separate, because I don't want to, this is purely just facilities, like bricks and mortar.
And, and I think the easiest thing to do is, in the purpose, the purpose of this policy is to establish guidelines for physical memorials.
Right.
Right there, I think is that perfect place to do that. And we can change the title to say physical memorials.
Right.
Thank you.
Now, what happens if there was already, like, say, a bench or a gazebo or whatever donated in someone's name? That will remain?
That will remain. This would be from the time of its approval forward. And we, we can do that cross-reference, I can work with Tammy to find the right cross.
Well, and it'll be a new policy, because the one that, that Mrs. provided is silent on it.
Yeah, it's much too vague, and it, and it really just talks about, it places the, it places the onus on the school principals to determine the validity and worth of scholarships, memorials, awards, gifts.
So I think just, just to sort of put in the back of your mind that at the point that we do develop a new policy with respect to that, that there should be a cross-reference to, between the two.
Right, and it would be as simple as memorial scholarships and physical memorials or something such as that stuff.
I think adding the word physical to this makes it much clearer.
Much clearer, right.
Thank you.
That's all. All right, anyone have anything else? Okay.
That is all of them then.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Howe, that was an incredible amount of work.
Yes, it was.
Gathering together, putting together, cross-referencing, compiling, making sense of decades' worth of, of work.
Well, the whole goal, and, and it was a lot of work to get them to this point. The whole goal for us was to take what, to me, would seem very convoluted if I was someone trying to read this, to have to look at, you know, eleven to twelve different policies. to have to look at, you know, eleven to twelve different policies and to try and condense it down to two or three to be able to read it from beginning to the end. So hopefully it will make it easier for our, our community.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much.
All right, that's it. We are joined from our work session.
And the next one will be on a Thursday.